Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December fourteenth School Committee Meeting. Just want to remind everybody that these meetings are recorded and displayed on our local access channels. First order of business is to approve the regular meeting minutes of November ninth, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November ninth meeting?
Can you have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And next, we move on to the Student Recognition Awards, with, starting with Mage Edwards.
Evening, everyone. Pretty happy to announce that Megan Boar has been chosen as the grade five December Student of the Month. Team's looking at Megan because she's kind, thoughtful, and respectful. She's also very helpful. Whenever work is finished, she wants to help out around the class in any way she can. She's always focused and prepared for class. Even though her writing is exemplary, she always tries to improve it. She takes pride, and puts a hundred and ten percent in everything she does. She also received all A pluses on her recent report card. Outside of school, Megan likes to play soccer and basketball. She wants her friends, and has a gracious reader, and all around the grade selection this year for the month. Congratulations, Megan.
Does any of the committee members have any questions for Megan?
Mr. Ponticelli, did you want to go first?
Sure. So Megan, congratulations. It's quite the honor. This is my favorite part of these meetings. It really is. What's your favorite subject?
Where's Miss Pepe? She gets them every month, I swear. Is she paying you guys before you come here? Are you sure you didn't deny that very?
Little coaching session.
Hmm. Go ahead, Mr. Ponticelli, sorry.
So, you like to write, as well? Do you ever do any writing in just, you know, in your free time?
Sometimes.
You have a lot of schoolwork to do, though, right? So, yeah, so, kind of. That's a damper on that.
Reader. What are you reading right now?
I'm reading the series The Giver. I'm on the second book, Messenger.
Uh-huh. And you're enjoying those?
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know. I'm always looking for new books for my boys to read. And playing basketball right now?
No, I just play by myself.
Okay.
And I play indoor soccer.
Very good. Are you a skier?
Yeah.
All right. I was gonna say, I know moms skis, so we're gonna see you up on the hills pretty soon?
Yeah.
I'm hoping. I think we're getting snow on Saturday. All right. Very good. And all A pluses, huh?
Yeah.
Try to do a little better next time, okay? Excellent, excellent job. You should be very proud of yourself. Congratulations. You're welcome. Yep. Thanks for suggesting.
So, very pleased to present Middle School Students of the Month to Mrs. Maddie. Maddie, grade seven. Maddie is the one that her teachers is always a joy to be around. Not only does she consistently meet the expectations of her teachers, but she also meets our expectations as a school for respect, responsibility, and participation in the whole education. She goes out of her way to do thoughtful things for others on a regular basis. She's a kind human being who demonstrates a level of consideration for her peers that is rarely seen in someone so young. She's an outstanding student and just a great, great person. Congratulations.
Those are some excellent things that your teachers said about you. Mr. Ponticelli?
Well, I just think, I think it's fantastic, because I don't want to say you're only in seventh grade, but you have such a kind heart, and you're looking out for your peers. It's, that's something that, you know, at your age is just sometimes a rare quality, and I think that makes you a role model for other students. I mean, it's great to get an award and all, by all means, but, you know, your friends and your classmates see that every day, and then they kind of think about that, and they want to be a better person and be more like Maddie, so, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Madison.
Anybody else? No? Congratulations.
For the presentation of the High School Students of the Month, I'd like to invite Mrs. Soma to introduce this month's recipient.
Thank you, Mrs. Soma.
I love when you come to our meetings, Mrs. Soma.
Ladies and gentlemen, Annabelle Fornier, class of two thousand seventeen, who happens to be a President Scholar in Group sixty-five fourteen of the International Thespian Society. Annabelle Fornier, one of our school choice students since seventh grade, has been a tremendous asset to our West Boylston community, which is now her West Boylston community. She is a leader at all times and exhibits great resilience in her daily life. She is a role model for many, including faculty. Annabelle has maintained stellar grades, participated admirably in extracurricular activities, all while helping at home with her younger siblings. While some people constantly look for excuses as to why they can't succeed, Annabelle, who could have the best excuses, proves to us each day that it is possible to rise up, buck up, and show her success. Annabelle has, and was, I find it, Annabelle has a beautiful singing voice, artistic ability, and incredible dramatic ability. Last week, actually, it's two weeks now, she starred in and directed the school fall production Crazy Town. People, this one's saying, I don't know. Her acting and directing were absolutely spectacular. Annabelle, a master of thoughtful characterization, exhibited creative and inspiring direction of the students in our class. She starred in her West Boylston career in theater by appearing in What I Want to Say But Never Will, was absolutely amazing as Mrs. Gibbs in Our Town. In addition, Annabelle worked backstage for our musicals, assisting with staging for On Stage, the musical, and she also did makeup and costuming for last spring's musical production, American Beauty. Annabelle Fornier, who is no relation to our highly creative and inspiring principal, is indeed a treasure to West Boylston and so richly deserves to be the December, never mind that, a whole year student.
I would just like to say that I had the pleasure of seeing the Saturday performance of Crazy Town and thought that it was absolutely excellent, yourself along with everybody else. I believe at the end, Mrs. Soma alluded to that the Play Purifier was your idea as part of that production?
Yeah.
Maybe you want to tell the rest of the committee a little bit about that?
Yes, please.
So, for my last scene, I had to be a typical cheesy saleswoman, and so I decided to be very stereical with it and to emphasize it by saying it was cool every time I had to say it, and it just got worse and worse, so it plays every time I said, "The Play Purifier." I just continued to emphasize it.
Tell them what the Play Purifier did.
It was meant to be a tool that cleaned things from the plays, like violence and offensive materials.
I like it.
Oh, I get it.
So after each mention of it, there was a little skit from a particular play that was purified?
Very good.
That's awesome.
I like it.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions?
What are your plans going forward?
Well, I've already started applying to college. I hope to be in pharmacy. I applied to, so I applied to Duane, which is in Pennsylvania, and it has a really good six-year pharmacy program. But I'm also going to be applying to more local places like Assumption, Jireh, Silverstone Two, and New Maxwell.
Incredible. Excellent.
URI has a great one, too.
Yeah.
Awesome job. Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can I just say, Carolyn Soma, you make me wish I was a student again. Seriously, lady, I only could hope that I was sitting in a classroom with you five years ago. No.
Now that I'm at middle school, you have to pride them for my whole day of years. I want kids to all my students, make you look like.
Well, you are a peach. Thanks for coming tonight.
Excellent.
She's too much.
Now we'll move on to a report from the Student Advisory Council.
So, last night, the art department, including the National Art Honor Society and Triumph had our winter art show and winter concert, where it was both middle school and high school performing in the band and putting, having their art up in the hallways. And at the same time, it was the spaghetti dinner for the Haiti trip. They're fundraising money for that, so they can go. And in the Art Honor Society, we're doing a plate auctions, like, we painted plates and we're auctioning them off now, and half the money's going to the Beeman Memorial Library for donations. And next, in January, we're gonna paint the hallways by the locker rooms downstairs, because they're really nasty, and we're gonna put inspirational quotes up on the walls, along with nice sports silhouettes, to really make kids excited for gym class. And we also decided we're going to move our New York trip to Boston for this year, and we're going to the Museum of Fine Arts, and we're going to go see Wicked in Boston. And then, for Triumph, we helped out with the concert last night.
So, for fish or friends' inspiring student health, last Tuesday, we went on a field trip to the Massachusetts Youth Summit on opioid awareness. It was about four hours long and had a lot of information. Jim Wahlberg, the, not director, or, well, it's Mark Wahlberg's foundation, but his brother Jim kind of runs it, and so he was there. And then, like, former Patriots players were there, talking about how they don't take medicine or, yeah, painkillers, and they just kind of go through it. And then there was like a little movie presentation that Jim Wahlberg went through. And then, this morning, we had a meeting about the breast cancer walk, and this year we were thinking of changing it to a dance-athon to get more involvement from the students, because the walk has been a thing for a while, and we want to jazz it up a little. So we're still coming up with details on that. And then, for Student Council, we are organizing a Christmas basket for families, and we've been sending people down to the elementary school, collecting names for the Christmas baskets. We set up the giving tree and had all of the tags up for families or little kids who would like presents and cannot afford them, and every single tag was taken off the tree and brought back a present by December seventh, so those all got given. And then, the Hyannis trip this year, all the delegates have been chosen, and the first half payment, I think, is due in January, and it's going well.
All right.
Thank you.
That's it, you guys?
Yeah.
Thank you. Why are you guys doing Boston instead of New York, Ab?
Because last year, we did New York, and it, like, rained the whole time, and, like, it takes four hours to get there, and we were only at the museum for, like, an hour before we had to go to the play, and it just wasn't as, like, artsy as it should be.
Yeah.
So, like, we'll go back to New York, like, after this year.
Okay.
But we just decided to go to Boston, so we could go, we're going to the museum for, like, three hours.
That's nice.
Which we can't do in New York.
Right.
So.
Is Wicked at the Opera House?
I think so.
Good.
We're going to, like, Quincy Market for dinner.
Good.
It's gonna be exciting.
Nice for you guys. Good. Hope it doesn't rain.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Next, I'd just like to acknowledge the camera crew. Thank you for recording our meetings, and also Mrs. Johnson for taking our minutes. Next, we'll have community input, so if there's any community input.
I'm gonna invite some gentlemen to come on up. Absolutely. So, I just want to thank the Class of nineteen seventy-six for contacting West Best, actually. They had an idea when they were getting ready to do their fortieth reunion about making it somewhat of a philanthropic arrangement with their classmates. They contacted us, and I went to the reunion and accepted a check for twenty-five hundred dollars from the class. And then John LaJoy, who is joining us here, and-
Paul Menard.
Paul Menard, thank you, Paul. We hadn't met yet, but I had heard your name, contacted me and said they had an additional check that they would like to present, so I invited them to come to the School Committee Meeting and present the check here.
Excellent.
So.
Well, first, John LaJoy, and I know a few of you here, so thank you for seeing us. And I think this is the first of its kind initiative. Part of what we do when we get older and we're able is to give back to the community. And our class, and our committee, felt that we wanted to do something for the West Boylston school system, because, after all, it is the teachers here that we had during the nineteen seventies that helped make us what we are today. And so we came up with this idea. Paul and I spearheaded it, and the committee went to work, and we established a template so that other classes might use this as an example for fundraising for West Best. We understand that you have a trust, and that trust has a certain amount of money in it, and that, and that money is used to help teachers and students with their needs, with their school needs. And so we thought that we would establish this initiative, we put a plan in place, and we executed the initiative, and we were ha, our goal was, like, let's raise a thousand dollars, and we actually raised forty-five hundred dollars-
Wow.
-from donors and advertisers, and I'm here to present an additional check to Jen for two thousand dollars, which completes the forty-five hundred dollar donation from the Class of nineteen seventy-six.
That's great.
And one thing I do want to say, I saw the Student Recognitions. Rest assured that I would not have been selected for Student of the Month any month during the four years that I was at the high school.
You made a big comeback, though.
So, on behalf, on behalf of the Class of nineteen seventy-six, thank you so much for allowing us to do this initiative, and we'd like to do it going forward, and have other classes do it as well.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And additionally, I want to, I want to present the donor list and all the forms, letters, and whatnot, so that you have it, and I'm not only gonna present this in hard copy, I'm going to present it in, with a flash card. Now, this is a little different, kind of a thing. It's a flash card, it looks like a credit card, you can, you know, put it in an envelope and send it. So you make sure you have that in correctly, just, it swivels, and you put it in, all the forms here, the donor, the donor list, everything is here. So if anybody wants, wants to do this, or you want to promote this to other reunion classes, please, please do that, because that, that'd be the greatest thing, that every single year, that this kind of money is raised for West Best and for the West Boylston school systems. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to keep an aside, we did paint the line.
I was just gonna ask.
I saw the seventy-six up there.
Well, I love it. We usually know who has painted it.
Well, I was one of the ones that, that came covertly during the night, and actually did that, so I'm admitting it. And I think Paul, if I'm not mistaken, although I can't speak for him, put the seventy-six right there.
I love that, but it hasn't changed yet.
I don't know, but we have a private investigator checking into that.
That could happen. That could happen.
It's still there.
So, thanks, so again, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to do this for you, because we weren't quite sure. And I want to thank Madam Superintendent and Chris Fornier for being so cooperative during the whole process. So thank you so much.
That's great. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you, too. All right, with that, we can move on to the highlight on schools.
Do you need to grab your microphone back? Yes, please, we can hear you. Thank you. Here, you want to use my?
So we're gonna start?
Yes.
Right? So we're gonna, in your packet, you have both the standardized test results from the spring of two thousand sixteen, as well as our school improvement plan for this school year. I'd like to go through that with you all. As you know, we, as a district, we decided to participate in Park for grades six, seven, and eight, and the experience of taking that test online through Pearson, which was the vendor that worked with the state of Massachusetts, we gained a lot of insight and experience that should help us tremendously with this year's new MCAS two point oh, which is also being coordinated through Pearson, in which now we know we have the infrastructure, and we know the students are going to be very comfortable, and we should, and we should have a very positive experience. So the first page of the report is actually MCAS, which we also took for grade eight for science, technology, and engineering, and we did that. So what I want to say about that is, as you can see from the report, we were above the state average in the percentage of students who scored advanced by three percent, and above the state average in the percentage of students who scored proficient by six percent. Also compared to the state, we had three percent fewer students in the Needs Improvement category, and six percent fewer students in the Warning category. So, you know, when we looked at that, we said, that's great, we were above the state in all those categories. If you turn the page, we also have our grade ten MCAS for both ELA and math. To summarize, in the Advanced category, in grade ten, English Language Arts, we were twelve percent above the state average in Advanced, ten percent above the state average in Proficient, and we had two percent fewer students in the Needs Improvement or Warning categories than the state. Likewise, in math, the students who scored in the Advanced, we were seven percent above the state average. We were roughly the same as the state in the percentage of students who were proficient. We had two percent fewer students who landed in the Needs Improvement, and four percent fewer students who landed in the Warning category than the rest of the state. Again, that was for grade ten, English Language Arts and Mathematics. And on the next page, in the Science, Technology, and Engineering, percentage of students scoring Advanced, we were eight percent above the state average. Scoring in Proficient, we were thirteen percent above the state average. And in the categories of Needs Improvement and Warning, we were two percent fewer students who landed in those categories. So, again, categorically, we were above this, the state.
I'm just, I'm reading, unless I'm reading this wrong, I'm reading it, we're eight percent below the state, not above.
In Advanced, that's correct. Usually I put the Advanced and Proficient together, so seventy-eight percent of kids in West Boylston scored Advanced or Proficient, seventy-three percent scored Advanced or Proficient in the state, so five percent overall together.
Was the N included me?
That's how many students, the number of kids.
Oh, okay. I'm assuming the district and school numbers are the same, because this was the only grade that it was taken.
Sometimes they're not, though, because sometimes we have a student in an out-of-district placement that's taking it, and those students count.
Okay.
Those scores count.
But usually, this would be different, because it would be a vast majority, but this is only tenth grade.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you. So, the next report is actually a representation of our scores on Park, and what this does is it provides us with a breakdown of where our students fell. Level five being exceeded expectations, level one being did not meet expectations. Essentially, you want to be in three, four, or five, and preferably in four or five. So for grade six, English Language Arts, eighty-six percent of our students were in level three, four, or five. Okay? If you turn the page, in grade seven, English Language Arts, eighty-seven percent of our students scored in levels three, four, and five. Okay? Which we're very happy about. And in grade eight, in English Language Arts, ninety-four percent of our students scored in levels three, four, and five. And, uh, it's a one-year, you have one shot, it basically gives you some feedback, and so, obviously, you could dive into it in terms of the subgroups, but overall, ninety-four percent of the kids in grade eight scored in level three, four, or five, that's something that we're pleased with. And the experience, more than anything else, is gonna help us tremendously with, with MCAS this year. On the next page, we have math, beginning in grade six, where eighty-nine percent of the students scored in level three, four, or five. That's eighty-nine percent of the students. In grade seven math, eighty-six percent of the students scored level three, four, or five. And in grade eight, okay? Sixty-two percent of the students scored level three, four, or five, but what isn't reflected in there is that we had a number of students take the algebra assessment as opposed to the grade eight.
You didn't get a slide for them?
Don't have a slide for-
It's a hundred percent.
Hundred percent of the students.
Four or five.
Right. Were proficient or advanced. Hundred percent, so-
On the algebra, every single-
So twenty-four-
Because on here, we have nobody scoring five. Right. I know. Yeah.
Right. But say you took the top twenty-four students in the eighth grade, we elected to have them take the more difficult test, which is the Algebra One test, and a hundred percent of those kids were at level four or five.
And so, I can just jump in here for a second. Where you can see the combined score is if you look on the DESI website for grade eight, it shows the combined score of our grade eight, who took grade eight math, and the algebra score, and it was very high. The algebra kids were a hundred percent proficient, so that's, that really raises-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And what that, what that says to us is that we had made a move, personnel-wise, of moving a teacher from the high school, putting that teacher in the eighth grade, so that we could strengthen the math program in grade eight, particular, in particular, the algebra, and that paid off huge, because the scores went way up. So we're, we're very happy about that. And it's also gonna make those kids more prepared for Algebra Two when they get to the high school, so I think that's also gonna continue to pay off down the road. Questions of, uh?
Just one comment real quick, just to point out, I think grade six didn't have any in level one, which I think is excellent.
Right. They have that as well.
Just good.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
And again, this is-
And it's also going to make those kids more prepared for Algebra Two when they get to the high school, so I think that's also going to continue to pay off down the road. Questions?
Just one comment real quick, just to point out, I think grade six didn't have any in level one, which I think is excellent.
Right, they have that as well.
Just good.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
And again, this is, first time starting things, we have really nothing to match up and compare against. Can't look and say, here, this is what the state's doing, I don't see anything here and that that says that. So, it's really not a great comparative for us, because we really don't know.
First and last, actually.
Yeah, I know, that's what's, that's what's sad about, it's, I've, that was been on my squawk box for a while. We did receive, I had an eighth grade student take this, my son. And the reports that came home were different than these. It's kind of a report saying, almost like the advanced or not advanced, it was almost very similar to the MCAS.
Yeah.
In that respect.
Right.
So, the reports that the parents received.
A little more detail, be hard to go over that, obviously with, you know, two-hundred-and-forty kids.
No, I got you.
But it's nice that at the parent level, you can see more specifically.
I can see it very specific, and it was a good report.
This is the only report available from, that we can, that we can generate, this is the only report that's generatable for the school or district level. It's really skimpy compared to the amount of reports for MCAS that we could give you.
Oh, yeah.
For MCAS, we could give you a five-year trajectory, we could give you by standard, by standard, how, what percentage of students scored.
Right.
So, this is really not a lot of good data for us. There's nothing here that we can grab onto to make curriculum improvement, nothing. There's nothing about any standards, it's just general information about who passed or not, and how much they passed. So, it's, I hope that they improve it for the MCAS two point oh, and get back to some of the more meaty reports, so that we have something we can at least use to generate some information. If we're going to spend time giving kids these reports, it would be nice to be able to make curriculum improvements for them.
I would assume that's part of their goal.
I would too, right, but it wasn't for this year, I don't think.
We just, just as a side note, we just had a conference via webcam, or a conference with the Department of Education, and it was all of the middle school ELA and math teachers. And for about an hour and a half, we had a chance to preview new questions from MCAS two point oh, and they gave us some curriculum suggestions in terms of how to prepare the students. And the general consensus among the teachers in the conference was that it was so helpful to have had this year to do the online testing. And we're, we're preparing students now, putting the same accommodations, you know, into the, into the Pearson site, and basically preparing the kids for MCAS two point oh using the model. So, we're very grateful for the opportunity we've had to take the PARC. I think it sets us up really well for this year's testing, and the conference was very useful, because it's basically confirming that MCAS is a much different test than it was two years ago. We're no longer reading a single piece of information and being asked questions about it, we're being asked to read two and three pieces of information, and make comparisons, and to, you know, pull pieces of information from multiple texts. So, we're appreciative that we had that opportunity, and I think it should serve us well.
I would assume that that's going to change the way you teach.
Absolutely.
In the school, right now, to prepare for that.
Absolutely. And it was nice that the state gave us that preview, so that the teachers, particularly the ELA teachers, you know, know that they're preparing for that type of questioning. But it was also good to hear from the math side, you know, which questions the students would be allowed to use calculators, which types of calculators, that the problems that they're putting, sending before us have built-in tools, and calculators, and other, and other things, that we can start. Like, right now, we're giving kids practice on those types of questions in anticipation of that in April, and I think it'll be, you know, really helpful.
I'm just, I'm looking at grade six math, grade seven math, and grade eight math. In grade six and seven, we have no information under accountability subgroups, even though we have kids in those subgroups. But then if you look at grade eight, the percentages are there, so I'm just wondering why.
We have to have fifteen kids in a subgroup to get a score.
Thank you. Because I was looking at the fact that we had those numbers, specifically the students with disabilities numbers were high, affect level one and two, but we didn't have that.
I think it's for privacy reasons.
So, you can narrow down.
Yeah.
I got it.
Any other questions? I just, this statement, really not a question, I was able to read last month's report, I wasn't here, but I was interested about how you're changing for the third grade students from the electronic to back to paper. Which is probably a good idea.
Yes, I agree, yeah. But the other changes, Mr. Fornier mentioned in the conference call, there was no video component to the testing this year, which I mentioned several times, that seemed to certainly, I think, threw grade three off their rhythm, with the surprise randomness of the videos. That will not be an element this year.
Thanks. So, is this year, MCAS two point oh across the board, tenth grade included?
They take the regular MCAS still. It's just called, it might be the two point oh version, because they can change questions whenever they want, but they, by law, have to pass the MCAS.
Okay. We have the school improvement report, part of this as well?
But publicly thank the work that our principal school council has put into advising us on the school improvement plan for this year. The first student learning goal for this year is that the percentage of students obtaining a passing score on the state assessment, which obviously would be the MCAS two point oh, will be above the state average in every content area tested, both at the middle and high school level, not just for one year, but for two consecutive years. That is our goal. Specifically within the area of curriculum and preparation for the standardized testing, in three of the curriculum areas, we're in year two tasks for the development of our history and social studies curriculum, and through the leadership of the superintendent, our teachers are working on, or planning for work on power standards, and maps, and standards, and actually in the process of looking at textbooks in preparation for the change in the, in the social studies curriculum. Similarly, our science teachers are also meeting to map curriculum, and to make sure that we're teaching the standards at the appropriate grade levels. And this is a process that's ongoing throughout the school year, teachers meeting during, after, after school, and during professional development time. And in the very beginning of conversations, assembling lists and working to identify strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities for examination of our health and physical education curriculum. So, we're beginning that process as well. The next major objective area is in the professional development area, where implementing a school-wide, grade six to twelve, positive behavior intervention strategies, which is a PBIS model for both middle and high school. We are in the process of offering ten hours, a minimum of ten hours, on professional development in this area. We're doing this during our release time, during faculty meeting time, and with students, we're doing this through our middle and high school advisory program. We've established a matrix of the types of behavior expectations that we have for students throughout all, all areas of the building, and that goes for athletics, activities, everything from the way you behave in the, in the corridor, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria, in the gym. And we're, we're working with the students to, you know, continue to elevate the culture and the amount of positive behavior that we see across the school. So, this is important work, and we're very excited about that. Next item, next mark goal is the creation of a committee to take a look at our athletic program, make sure that we're in compliance with the MIAA, with Title Nine, to look at the state of our co-op programs, our co-op teams. And, and we've met twice as a committee, it's very positive, very productive, we've got representation from the administration, from coaches, member of the WBAA, and we even have a member of the MIAA, Rich Riley, who attends our meetings and advises us, and gives us updates on, on policies and planning. So, it's been very helpful and very important work. Next goal is the development, which we're actually in the middle of, our school budget for fiscal year eighteen. We're working with the department chairs, team leaders, to set the budget, and we'll be presenting that to the school committee in the coming months. We have had a staff training and whole school training in Alice, which is our partnership with the West Boston Police for school evacuation, school emergency management. We have an assembly tomorrow with Officer Dugan, two assemblies, one with our middle school students, one with our high school students, where we're going to review our most recent Alice drill. We have questions we've taken from students, we've given Jay a couple weeks to prepare his responses and his answers, he's going to come in tomorrow with some slides, and we're going to answer the kids' questions about, you know, why we operated the way we did, and what procedures we followed. And they have questions, it was sort of a what-if nature, and that Jay's going to attempt to answer with myself and Dr. Lozot, with the students tomorrow. Follow-up will be another drill in the spring, and we feel really good about our level of preparedness. Next, we're developing just a, just a plan for curriculum-based school trips, so that when we, we have a trip that you do, you know, through the LSA, or the honor societies such as Haiti, you know, we have a trip we do with the eighth grade, which this year is New York City. We'll have our trip for Washington DC, which we'll bring back next year for grade nine. Continue our work with Nature's Classroom, grade six, and we do a trip at the moment for grade seven, as well as in grade ten, where we go into the state. So, we look for, continue to look for opportunities for the students to foster positive relationships, develop independence, encourage teamwork through their participation in group fundraising. And we feel as if these opportunities have been well received by the community and by the students. Next, our next goal is providing professional development opportunities to meet the state's mandated fifteen hours of professional development in the area of special education for all teachers towards their recertification. This is something which we began at the beginning of the school year, and which teachers have begun to participate in. And the final item is, we received a very positive review from NIASC on our five-year evaluation, and one of my responsibilities is to respond to some of the areas from the NIASC report, to give them an update on our growth and how we've met our goals. The next report, which is a six-year report, follow-up on the five-year report, I submit in February, and then get feedback, and I will present that at a future school committee meeting, letting the committee know that we've, you know, met our goals and that we're on. Those are a lot there, but I appreciate the time to go through that with all of you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, do we need to take a vote?
No, okay.
Just on mine.
Just on your side, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fornier.
Thank you.
Next, we just need to approve the two warrants. First one is the payroll warrant dated December sixteenth.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the payables warrant dated December sixteenth, twenty-sixteen.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
An approved payroll warrant dated December second. I'm sorry, that last one was payables, not payroll. This one is the payroll warrants for December second and December sixteenth. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve the payroll warrants dated December second, two thousand sixteen, and December sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? And we'll move on to subcommittee reports, starting with the communications subcommittee.
The communications subcommittee met this evening to discuss the strategic planning process for the renewal of the strategic plan. So, we've articulated out a plan beginning in January through June on the community engagement plan. So, we'll be beginning in early January, bringing groups together, and by the end of June, we'll have a plan presented to the school committee for approval on the strategic plan for the next five years.
So, thank you. And next is the negotiations subcommittee report. The negotiations subcommittee met this evening, Mrs. Breen, myself, and Dr. Shopper, and the purpose of this meeting was to discuss Dr. Shopper's contract. Her contract was a six-year contract initially, but in the third year, going into the fourth year, there was a negotiation piece there in regards to her compensation. So, we have a recommendation to the committee. We had two options, one, just do it for one year, or do it for the three years, and it looked as though the best option was the three-year option, and she basically agreed to a two percent increase, just like the teachers, for those three years, so it would be consistent with the teachers. Sure. So, that's our recommendation. Mrs. Breen, do you have any other?
All right, based on this recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the compensation addendum of Dr. Shopper's contract?
Make a motion to approve the contract addendum as presented.
Second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, I just want to say that I think the town of West Boylston has ourselves a real gem, and I really appreciate the, the opportunity to work with you, Beth, and I think this is, based on what I've seen across the state, these are really reasonable numbers, and just we're, I know I'm really thrilled to have the opportunity to work with somebody of your caliber, and at such an agreeable sort of rate, so that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? All done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I, I second the motion, that it's a, it's a joy to work for, for all of you too, so thank you very much for this, I appreciate the three-year package, it's very nice to have that. Appreciate it.
Do you want me to sign this one, or do you have a?
You can sign it, and I'll sign it too. That's great, thank you.
All right, we can move on to communications and reports, starting with Mr. Mahon.
As Mr. Fornier mentioned, there was a conference call last week with the state regarding changes to the test design, and some details in terms of how the questions will be formatted. Couple of things that did come up, as I had mentioned, there will be no video component to this year's testing. The sessions will return to untimed, as last year, there was some time limits on them. Words may be read to students who are struggling with some of the questions on math and science and technology, which is a big change, and there's some changes in the protocol and procedure for graphic organizers. Also, continuing with testing, I spoke with the state coordinator for the NAEP testing, the National Education, National Assessment of Educational Progress, which I had reported earlier in the year, grade four was selected for participation this coming February, February second. I do have to correct the information I conveyed earlier in the year, it was under the impression when the, the information first came, that it was going to be twenty-five students selected in grade four for the online tablet component, and an additional twelve on the paper and pencil. Once I got the student roster last week, it's actually all of fourth grade, it's two sessions of twenty-five students, separate students, for a hundred and twenty minutes on the tablet, and the remaining students will be taking a ninety-minute paper and pencil test. So, I have a follow-up call in early January with the coordinator for this program, there'll be communication with parents in early January regarding it, but it is all day, grade four, February second. I'll report back when I have more details on that. We have concerts coming up tomorrow night for grades four and five, band and chorus at six-thirty, and then for K through three on the twenty-first at nine-thirty, and then one. one in the afternoon, and we will have a students awards breakfast for grades four and five on December twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to Mr. Fornia.
Thank you. The middle high school, Mrs. Soma, mentioned we had a family arts night and spaghetti supper with a dessert auction. It was a really nice evening, we combined the middle and high school art and music concerts, we had a really great turnout. The spaghetti supper and dessert auction raised nearly fifteen hundred dollars towards the student trip to Haiti, which we're very excited about. I'd like to thank all the members of the community who made donations and who bid on the desserts, it was a lot of fun, and it was very successful. As Mrs. Soma also mentioned, the crazy town play was a blast, the kids did a really great job, and we're excited about the middle school students who are going to be doing the Wizard of Oz Junior, and they're going to be having auditions starting, I think, next week?
January fifth.
Okay, so after the holidays.
January fifth.
Wizard of Oz Junior should be a lot of fun, new director, so it should be, should be really cool, and Mrs. Soma, there's so much that helped guide that group and work with the community director, so it should be great. Speaking of theater, the seventh grade went to the Hanover Theater last week, they went to see a series of one-act plays that portrayed some of the short stories that they're studying in their language arts classes. Two really cool events were the Thanksgiving baskets and turkeys that were assembled with our students and with cooperation from the West Boston Police. There were some wonderful meals that were donated to members of the community. We also had an abundance of gifts through the Giving Tree, which coordinated with the high school student council through Friendly House in Worcester. That was a really, they were overwhelmed by the number of gifts that students and staff brought in this year, and it was really something to be proud of. We visited on Friday, December ninth, the Lemmonster High School Center for Technical Education and Innovation, we had twenty-four students, we get the tour of the facility, see all the shops, we got to meet staff, talk to students, guidance, administration. Kids came back with some wonderful experiences and ideas. The next step for us is we're going to meet with students individually to answer questions that they had about their visit and to start to talk with them about where they see some of their interest lying, as they will have an opportunity, if they apply, to do a vocational exploration at CTEI. We're also going to be sharing the informants with parents who want to meet with us to learn more about the program, who need help with the application process. And there's an open house February fourth for parents, and our application deadline is March one. But there's been a lot of positive buzz around the school from the eighth grade kids who visited, and they thought it was very exciting place, to use their words. So that was it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, and on to Mr. Pappalero.
Did they serve them lunch there? Did they serve them lunch there, too?
We did get to see the restaurant.
Yeah.
And their bakery. Oh my gosh. Incredible, right?
You have November's expenditure report, I can read it here. Financial condition, opposition at this point, the background for November is excellent, okay? Couple of little negatives that came up on the expenditure report have been corrected, they were actually accounts or salaries that were charged to an account where the incumbents wasn't there, so it showed that we're all drawing close to the accounts, but that's right. Not the case, the negatives are still there, because when you make the adjusting entry for in this half, this is November's report, I just made the adjusting entry for in December, so we reflect it on the next one.
All right, that's fine. For facilities, two things we've been working on, and we finalized one of them, we still have the other one that is work in progress, which is, the first thing is the fire alarm system, we got our quotes on that, did our due diligence out there, and put together a package for the new system to be installed. It'll be installed during February vacation where there's no students in the building, because the whole other system has to be dismantled and shut down, they replace all the smoke detectors, all the, everything with the system will be changed over. That's a go. Other items, we met with the architect for the generator on it, he's, he's put it together with the engine, with electrical engineer to see the size, scope, and shape, and where we're going to put it, where we can put it, where it's going to go, as far as to meet code, to meet the building, and so forth, that, he's coming back to us with that, that we're going to have to go out to bid for, so we will do that. Hopefully, we'll have bids out on the street by, I'm hoping, the middle of January, so that we can get it in. We have to do a date to get it in, install by the end of April to get it, so that the grants that we have through the fire chief has to be expended by that time, which we will do. All right, because he was, it was nice of his department to put together those grants first and give us some supplemental funding for this project and make it, make it go, and we will do that. As far as the budget for FY eighteen, still work in progress, as you saw in the superintendent's report, the dates and the schedules of what we're working on, we're putting together some capital plans and projections for that budget also, to upgrade our facilities in both schools. That's pretty much it, what I have on my calendar for tonight.
Is this the plan still to take the generator from this building and move it to the elementary school?
This is the better of the two. If it's feasible and if it's cost, if it's not cost prohibitive out of our range of what we have funds available, that's our intention, because this is a better generator, it's a, it's sixty-five K, I think the one over there is forty-five K, so it's even more powerful too on it, and it's better condition than the one over there.
So it should be sufficient for that building, at least.
Right, okay. So that's, that was our intention, that's part of the scope of the project, that we can get it all in within a financial, you know, budget that we have, we'll do that.
Sure. I know it's early in the heating season, but do we have any updates from, what's the name of the project?
ABM?
Yeah, from the project.
We haven't had any, we haven't met with them or anything on that. They did come in to fine-tune all the boilers, okay, about, oh, three weeks ago, two weeks ago before we get into this.
We're going to need them tomorrow.
Right, so ahead of the weekend, we'll definitely need them, then Thursday, Friday, whenever on it, but they did come in to do that, to fine-tune that, that's the last time I talked to them at that point. We've had our other maintenance contractors come in and do, do some work on all the units that are up on the ceiling with the belts and so forth and so on. You know, actually, they'll be coming in in Christmas break to do the, change all the filters, again, they do it twice a year. That's part of the agreement we have to have with ABM to honor the contract every side.
Right.
But we did, then with them, but as far as ABM goes on it, I saw two bills in there for gas, so of course, to me, they were high, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's the season.
Okay.
That's what we're paying.
Compared to the oil a few years ago.
Oh, right, that's true, that's, that's true. Ten thousand gallons will go down, you know, costly.
Well, not to mention, I think it was a couple of years ago, we had a delay to the start of school because it was so cold out that the oil burners wouldn't kick on, except that with the fuels like gummed up or something. Anybody else have any questions?
You do have three warrants there, just as you sort the oil, you want to show off, just make sure you sign them, it's for your own.
All right, on to Dr. Shopper.
Yes, I have given you the typical things, I give you the teacher attendance.
Which, by the way, eighty-three percent of our teachers have missed two days or less.
Right, I know.
Just, that's, that's very good. No, I mean, they're around all these little ones across the street especially.
Yeah, and you know, if you go up to the next level, ninety-six percent.
Right.
Fewer than five days, right?
Yep.
So that's, you know, we don't have many people who take advantage of
Nope.
the other, the other amount of days. I did want to make a public announcement regarding our vocational partnership. We did receive clarification from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education concerning options for parents of students who reside in West Boylston for their vocational education. As you know, the school committee designated, using policy LBB, a requirement that students apply to the Lemmonster Center for Technical Education Innovation for any programs that are offered at that vocational technical school, including the grade-nine exploratory program. I did send a notice providing this information to all grade-eight families to clarify the issue, because there was some other information floating around in the community that was incorrect. I want to encourage parents who have further questions about vocational opportunities to contact my office directly, (508) 835-2917. I'll take every one of those calls immediately to try to help clarify the reality of what has to happen for vocational students. I'm going to report now for both Sherri and I on the coordinated program review. As you know, we had a corrective action plan progress report that was due on December twelfth. We did turn it in by December twelfth, we don't have feedback yet on whether it was accepted. Once we have it accepted, or we have a feedback from them, I will provide you with a copy of the report. Chris talked about the curriculum teams that we've been running, so we do have a social, the social studies team, they've been pretty active for the past two years, and they're at the point where they actually are selecting textbooks to use for their new curriculum map that they've created. The biggest change to the map is in grade eight, where we are no longer going to teach US history, but we're going to teach World History One, which is pretty standard at most middle schools in Massachusetts. We're also going to move US history to grade nine, and so those folks need new materials. We ran a few meetings last week in order to help people know the provisions that they have to make for purchasing new textbooks. One of those is part of our civil rights procedures, and that is to guarantee that the materials that you order don't have any bias in them. So the teachers right now are going through the materials that they selected to just make sure they're free of bias, cultural bias, or anything that just sticks out at them. They want to make sure they're working with a vendor who's, you know, who's presenting them with proper materials. The other things that are important there are, we also want to work with a vendor who can help us accommodate for folks with special needs, so we are making, we make sure that the vendor can give us a large, large print materials and can have, you know, their books on tape, or has some kind of a provision also for English language learners, so they, most of them, we would like them to have some kind of a, at least vocabulary databases in other languages that kids can access that go with their product. So they're, they're looking at those now, and it really, this is a narrow group of people who are doing that, they're just the teachers who are selecting new materials. So it's Mr. Carter, it's Ms. Coliff at the high school, and Mrs. Avery at the elementary school, those are folks that are buying new materials right now. The science team, they're awesome, by the way, I just, they're a really fun group to work with, and we started, they did a lot of work to collect curriculum maps from their colleagues, you know, it was real teacher leadership there, they went to their colleagues and they said, we're gonna, we have to make a new science curriculum, and we need you to put, to put it on the map, and we need to bring them back so we can vet these and make sure that they're well-aligned, and they brought back all of their maps this week. We have an appointment in January to go through those with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that we have accounted for the standards that we need to account for on those maps, and it's just, it's, it's very good work that they're doing. And we're going to have our first meeting of the phys ed and health curriculum team during the, the day that we have for Professional Development Day in January, and they'll be doing the first step in curriculum planning, which is a SWOT analysis, looking at the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats to our, threats I call, or challenges to our phys ed curriculum, and the administrative team and I have been talking about, you know, things that we might like to see. I, I, I vote to bring back the ping pong to the hallway, it's my favorite, but we haven't had it in a little while, but it's really good to have the ping pong tables out there. So we're, we're just, we're just doing a little bit of work like that. I did give you the run-through of how the budget process works, you may have seen this before, but right now, we're at the time when it's out in the hands of teachers. We do use a bottom-up budget approach, teachers get their hands on the budget, they can write down the stuff that they want to run their classrooms, and then it, it goes to the principal, it comes to me, and we really account for what people actually need. So we're right in the middle of that process right now, it will be in the principal's hands in a few days for them to review and then send on to me, and to get ready for the March eighth public hearing. I also did want to announce, because Roger didn't announce it, no one else announced it, and Carolyn didn't either, we, we do have a major purchase that we're about to make to, for a school improvement, we're purchasing new curtains for the stage, which is a large investment, we're buying those with Ellison funds, and we have a, what?
Was Boylston.
Arts Foundation.
And a donation from the Arts Foundation, right? So it's a combination of funds, right? So we're really excited about that. It's not the front curtains, the cranberry color ones, they think those are in very good condition, but it's all the black ones in the back are going to be replaced, so it's going to be a great, a great addition, and they're going to be perfect, of course, Carolyn's.
They did quote on those two different.
She vetted that out, I know she did. Yeah, yeah, so we're excited about that, so another little school improvement coming very soon, and that's all I have for you.
Excellent, any questions? That brings us to school committee reports, start with Mr. Pappalero. Mr. Shopper?
All set.
Mrs. Breen? All right, with that, look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.